Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council of the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, January 21st at 6:00 PM exactly. City Clerk, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here. Thank you very much. If you are able, please stand and join for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was no closed session between our last regular meeting and this one, so we'll This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar, or matters of municipal concern and not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the City Council. I'll start with speaker cards first, and then if there's anyone else wishing to address the council, you're welcome to do so. First, I have Erica Pucey. Erica, should you so choose, but you are not required to do so, share with us your name and your address.
Erica Pucey, 1438 Lake Street.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Well, thank you. I'm going to be reading a lot, and so is my friend Mike, and sorry about that, but it's probably better if I read than try to just speak. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Since September, a small group of Calistogans has been meeting to discuss the impact of increased traffic in our area, and also the disregard for traffic safety laws that has accompanied it. It is true that some Calistoga citizens are more affected by traffic and noise than others are, but I do believe that in every area of our little city, whether it be Foothill Boulevard, or Archway, Lake Street, or Wapo Avenue, Grant Street, or Hazel, you will find neighbors impacted by the issues that we are addressing. What we are asking for as a group has been brought up at different meetings and forums during the past eight months. Our goal is to show community support for ideas and solutions that have been put forth by the public, by city officials, and by experts in the field. Before reading our petition, which we will start circulating tomorrow, I would like to emphasize that though we ask for increased and strict law enforcement, our goal is not punishment. Our goal is deeply rooted in safety and quality of life. So here's the petition, and I think you all have a copy?
We do, thank you.
Okay. Petition to Support Traffic Safety Laws and Traffic Noise Abatement. We, the undersigned, respectfully submit our concerns regarding Calistoga's traffic problems. We are in agreement that increased speeding, disregard for traffic safety laws, and excessive vehicular noise are having a negative impact on all of our neighborhoods. They have become the norm. We request that these problems be acknowledged and that steps be taken to correct them. These steps might begin with, but should not be limited to, the following. Strict enforcement of traffic laws with a fully-staffed police department. The installation of more traffic calming devices. Examples might include electric speed signs, stop signs, speed humps, striping, and rumble strips. And as of last week's forum, we might want to add to this traffic islands and chicanes. Public outreach and education. As concerned citizens, we encourage and support the efforts of the City of Calistoga, the City Council, and the Calistoga Police Department to address these problems. We want to work together to make our neighborhoods safer and quieter. Thank you for your consideration. So that's the petition.
You were right at three minutes, you must have practiced that.
Well, I'm not done, is that okay?
Go for it.
Okay, it's positive.
And because we'll give you some diplomatic immunity because you politely and energetically serve on a commission for the city, so thank you.
Thank you. Donald Williams has attended our meetings, and we are very grateful for his thoughtful input. We have met with Chief Selaya, and our meeting with him on December 16th was productive and hopeful. Since then, the chief has actively followed up on several concerns, and we will be meeting again next Monday, the 27th. We appreciate his time and responsiveness. We cordially invite all of you to work with us when you are able. We would also like to invite other members of the community to join us or contact us. Mike Nistari will be reading our evolving mission statement to give you an idea of what we are about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike, you are my next speaker card.
I just have a little side note before I begin. The author of our mission statement, a friend and supporter of the group, used a posted radar speed sign and conducted his own informal speed study on Lake Street. In just 30 minutes, he counted 37 cars traveling over 40 miles per hour in the 25 mile per hour zone. So, I'll start with our statement, and end with the statement. We are strongly united in our belief that issues related to vehicle traffic flow throughout Calistoga have dramatically increased, reaching a level that represents a significant impact on the quality of life for Calistoga citizens. The issues manifest themselves in many ways, including the following: chronic speeding on many city streets, excessive noise, and a general disregard for traffic safety laws. Our objective is to raise visibility to the City Council and actively request that the council consider comprehensive programs designed to mitigate the issues. As a group, we number eight or so people. More importantly, we may serve as advocates for many Calistoga citizens who agree with our assertion. We hope to support this presumption by producing a petition, which Erica has just mentioned, and create it in good faith and signed by citizens in a timely manner. We recognize that the traffic issues we observe are not unique to Calistoga, and that cities throughout the country have engaged programs with positive results. As such, we do not want to reinvent the wheel, but rather leverage proven methods. We are not experts in traffic management, nor do we claim to know the best mitigation techniques. Nonetheless, by sharing our experiences, we hope to actively engage in the process of seeking solutions. Simply stated, we want to work together to make our neighborhoods safer and quieter. We acknowledge that virtually any solution deployed will directly or indirectly involve the Calistoga Police Department, and that Calistoga police officers will serve as primary enforcers for most mitigation methods. With this in mind, it's highly appropriate and beneficial to discuss these programs openly with the Chief of Police, the City of Calistoga, and the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you've heard me say many times, I applaud efforts of all of our residents and citizens who get involved regardless of what the topic is. It's certainly not lost on this council, the importance of this matter. It's been addressed multiple times. What it comes down to is a balance of resources versus priorities, and as we know, we have challenges, and have had challenges, as with every police department, that being the primary enforcer of our traffic laws in maintaining staffing. We've had, it was, obviously came up on the community survey, and we had a very productive conversation with residents and neighbors of the Grant Street project on Grant Street, one of our more popular streets unfortunately for high speed, and we had some really positive feedback and input there that we can start to use elsewhere in the community as possibilities as well. So, thank you for that. I have no doubt that you'll get plenty of signatures for this particular topic, and I applaud you for doing that, but know that short of additional resources, and not necessarily saying funding, but the actual staff able to do so, we will make every effort to do that, and I'm happy to hear, as I would not expect otherwise, that our chief has been fully engaged and supportive of this endeavor, so thank you for that very much.
I'd like to thank them also, they've been working hard. I think they're approaching it perfectly, respectfully, with organization, with conscientiousness, so I compliment all of them. I think they're modest, they were, at a couple of meetings that I attended, there were considerably more than eight in attendance, so, and they were spread out, or they were in, from throughout the town. So, I encourage you, and I thank you for your efforts for coming forth tonight, and for your continuing efforts to bring this, the attention of the rest of the population.
Thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards, is there anyone else wishing to address the council? All right, with that said, I will close oral communication, and we'll entertain a motion on the agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, and a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you. Council requests and ideas for discussion, Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Yes, I just want to give a little report about the activities that I'm being engaged in these last couple weeks. This past week, Chief Selaya and myself, we attend the Op Ed House hosted by Congressman Mike Thompson, Assemblywoman Cecilia Aguirre, and State Senator Bill Dodd. I think it's important that we get a good relation with them, because when we need something for Calistoga, we can certainly ask them for their help in any issues that we have. Also, for your information, and for the council information, this year, I was selected among 25 other Latino leaders from Sacramento to San Diego to be part of the HOPE, Hispanic Organized for Political Equality Leadership Institute Class 2020. I will be attending trainings through the state from January through September, and all the expenses related to this is through a scholarship that I applied, so it will be no expenses for the city.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Also, I will represent Calistoga to the Lico Cities Community Services Committee from January through September. And lastly, I would like to see, along with City Manager, Park and Recreation Department, and Public Works Department, I would like to start making plans and plan activities for the, for the community. For example, in many cities, yesterday, they celebrate Martin Luther King Day with community services, and in Calistoga, we did not have nothing, as I know, I was aware of. So, I think it's very important that we start doing that, especially to get our community involved. There are many holidays and special days that I think we should organize with our residents, because it's important that we keep growing as a community. And I think that's it.
Thank you. In the past, I know that we've had days of service on Martin Luther King Day, and I think the school district was part of organizing that?
Yes.
Because I participated in a few of those. I'm not sure why that wasn't the case this time around, but we could certainly look into that, because I know there's a countywide effort that's organized as well.
Right.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Williams?
I'd just like to report that I attended a meeting of the Calistoga Community Schools Initiative, CCSI, and in fact, Councilmember Lopez Ortega, I think was also there.
Yeah.
She was so busy, lost track of some of where you were, but at any rate, I want to thank Up Valley Center, Zach Guzik, for organizing this meeting. He's able to bring together a number of different organizations and services from throughout the valley, addressing issues such as after-school care for children, adult education, innovative health solutions for folks who are unable to avail themselves of medical care in other ways, and also a tax program that the Up Valley Center is able to sponsor and encourage. So, there were about, there were over 40 representatives of different organizations from throughout the valley, and so the Up Valley Center, I think, is doing a good job, and Zach also, in pulling all that together and sharing those resources.
I sit on the steering committee for the CCSI, and they do a really good job, and it's bringing back the community organizations in with the school district, and how both parties can benefit from one another and share, so they're doing a really good job, and Zach's got a great energy for that, so we appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, back early fall, I believe, the council passed a proclamation on climate action, and since that time, I have been participating with some representatives of the other cities in the county, and we have the formation of a Climate Action Committee, of which Mayor Chris is going to start participating in as well. As kind of a budget forewarning on this, the county has allocated about $100,000 towards a position, I'm going to guess it's going to be in their planning department, to assist with developing climate action goals, as well as things that they can do to help the individual cities achieve our own climate action goals. And I think this position's also going to be looking for some grants, and both state, federal grants, maybe even some private grants to come in to help fund some of the more difficult things that need to be done. So, I just want to let you know there is a collaborative effort going on. We undoubtedly will be asked at some point, probably effective next fiscal year, to participate financially in funding this position and making sure that they can do what they need to do, but in a nutshell, things are moving. It's going to cost a little bit of money, it's going to be shared cost. We will still have the ability to autonomously develop our own climate action plan and goals. The position that is being considered at the county will be to help us achieve those things, and potentially to find funding to do it as well. So, I kind of wanted to give you all an update, and that's what's going on the Climate Action Proclamation Committee front.
And you remind them often that the City of Calistoga was the first, and for a long period of time, the only city in the county with a climate action plan?
Well, not only did I, but City Manager Mike Kern was there, and he reminded them also. So, they kind of got a double dose of that.
They're catching up.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service on that as well. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Nothing tonight.
All right, a couple of things I'd like to report. We did have, as I briefly mentioned a little bit earlier, a very good meeting on the Grant Street Reconstruction Project that will be taking place at some point in the future. We had, how many, probably close to 60 people? 40? 40 people attend, and there was very active and engaged dialogue, and at times it felt like 60 when they weren't happy with something, so that's probably why I felt that way. It was a very engaged dialogue, a lot of good ideas, as well as a sharing of information on why there are obstacles to doing some things that some people would like to see done. Minor things like the law and liability kicking, but it was a very engaged group, very good feedback, and it is a collaborative process that will hopefully and eventually result in the reconstruction of Grant Street and making it a safer situation, not only for drivers, but also for pedestrians and bicyclists. Something I would like to, and Zach is here somewhere, I think, right Zach? To bring back to Lynn and your department, something that I had asked for us to look into as, as, long back as five years ago, as recently as two years ago, and now I'm going to insist on, and it's no fault of your groups, it was just priorities shift, I would like us to do a further exploration of a commercial property vacancy tax. It's sometimes referred to as the Sunnyvale model. It exists, I know it's complicated, I know it tends to be not a favorite of some commercial property owners, but when you have a situation, when you have commercial properties in your downtown district that have basically zero penalty for remaining vacant because of Prop 13 in your tax bill for your entire year is $1,300, the incentive for you to find a tenant can sometimes not be there. So if you can start that, or continue that research, your team probably has a file on it somewhere. I would like that at a, as a future agendized item, or even potentially subcommitted. But it is, you've heard me say often, I am a fan of plagiarism. If somebody has already bumped their head and done all the dirty digging, let's steal the idea and replicate it here. The other thing I'd like staff to follow up on, I've had two previous conversations, and I believe Councilmember Lopez Ortega was involved in one of those, with Cecilia Aguirre, our state assembly member, that there is grant and funding for translation devices through the state of California. The ball was left in their court, so if we, from a staff level to a staff level, could follow up and find out where we are on that. These are simultaneous translation devices that will allow for Spanish and English interpretation at city council meetings, city events, et cetera. The cost of entry is sometimes an obstacle, but we were led to believe that there are funds, if not full-on systems available, that aren't being utilized elsewhere. And then the last thing I want to acknowledge, the fact that this past week, the passing of John Merchant, and certainly has had an impact on this community, and his family continues to, and our condolences and our thoughts are with his family during this very difficult period. With that, we'll move on to the City Manager's report. City Manager Kern?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, just a couple of quick items. Last week, we received confirmation from the state that we were awarded $160,000 in SB 2 money, so that's the grant that Lynn applied for to assist in permit streamlining for ADUs. So, part of the goal will be to develop shelf-ready plans that people can borrow to build an ADU, and also permit streaming, streamlining.
And an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit?
And a J-ADU is a junior accessory dwelling unit.
Exactly, thank you.
And then lastly, we were able to successfully negotiate an extension on the due diligence period with the county. That will extend through February 19th, allow us a little bit more time to-
And this is for the acquisition of the fairgrounds?
Correct.
Potential acquisition, excuse me.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no proclamations, presentations, or awards. We'll move on to the consent calendar, and I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless it's requested for an item to be removed, and I am going to request the polling of item number two. Any other items need to be polled?
Number three, please.
Two and three.
I'll move items one and four.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford on items one and four, I have a second by Councilmember Kraus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you. Item number two, consideration of a resolution accepting a donation from Michael Straka for radar speed signs. The recommended actions, consider adopting the resolution. Will you take us through that, City Manager?
We were able to successfully obtain a $1,000 donation from Mr. Straka for the purposes of installing, or offsetting some of the costs of the radar signs. He specifically requested that one be placed near his residence on Grant Street, and I believe that has been done.
Thank you.
So we thank him very much for his donation.
And these are the radar-driven speed signs that post what speed you're doing, and lets you know when you're in excess of what the speed limit is?
Correct. So, I believe that we've completed installation, and the police department will be programming them, and what it is, is it's either positive or negative reinforcement. If you're going too fast, it will flash "slow down." If you're not going too fast, it'll maybe give you a smiley face.
Great. And the reason I asked that to be polled, anytime someone makes a contribution like that, contribution's one thing, but a contribution toward public safety, and they are a resident of Grant Street, and taking into concern the conditions of their neighborhood, we certainly appreciate that. With that said, any other questions on that item? I will entertain a motion on that item as presented. I'll move the item.
Second.
Move by myself, second by Vice Mayor Dunsford, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you. Moving on, item number three, at the request of Councilmember Williams, annual review of development agreement for Calistoga Hills Project, the recommended action is to accept the report. City Manager Kern, will you take us through that as well?
I think I'll turn this one over to Zach. He's, he wrote the staff report, and is more familiar with it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, this is the annual report for Calistoga Hills. The city has three active development agreements, each one of them, we prepare an annual report for. This is, follows sort of the standard form that we've used for our annual reports, where the developer provides us evidence and supporting documentation that they're meeting and fulfilling the terms of the development agreement. In the case of Calistoga Hills, their development agreement was approved in 2013, I believe, initially for five years, has been extended several times by one-year increments, and at this point, the developer has provided evidence of what they are doing on the property. Of course, that's verified by staff inspection throughout the course of the year. In this case, their, their work this year has primarily been focused on the finishing or the progress on the construction of their loop road through the property, rough grading and tree removal, and they've, I think they've installed their secondary emergency vehicle access, and the applicant, or the developer, has provided information on all those, and I would note that Aaron Harkin from the development team is here, and he could probably answer some, any questions you may have in detail.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Zach, you've answered my question basically. Are scheduled, scheduled confirmation of progress, are they under a regular basis, or are they on an ask-call basis as, as the checklist is, you know, gone through? How does that work?
So, so the, the actual annual report, each one has a different timing based on the anniversary date inside the development agreement. In terms of specific things, it really varies, and some of that has to do with the extensions that we grant through the city manager, the one-year extensions at a time. But there are certain things that are tied to specific dates, or certain thresholds. If you build this, you have to pay that. If you apply for this, you have to do this first, and we're constantly monitoring the project for different SEQA compliance things through the mitigation monitoring and reporting program as well.
So staff actually physically goes up to the site and checks on these various aspects?
Yeah, it, it varies which staff and which things. I've been up on the site several times, I think last time I was up there, we were doing a tree inspection with CAL FIRE, but our public works team goes up there periodically, our fire chief goes up there, and our building official as well, particularly as it has to do with monitoring for stormwater runoff issues.
Thank you, Zach.
And to date, the project has adhered to and complied with all their terms and conditions of their entitlements?
They have.
Thank you very much. Any other council members, any questions? Anyone in the public, any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams, we have a second by Councilmember Kraus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number five, public hearing, consideration of a public convenience or necessity determination for the sale of beer and wine at the Brandon Cottage Inn. The recommended action is consider adopting the resolution. Taking us through this item will be Zach Tuzinger, Senior Planner Assistant to the City Manager. Zach, welcome back.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council. So I have to you tonight, for you tonight, an application for a determination of public convenience or necessity for the sale of beer and wine at the Brandon Cottage Inn. The Brandon Cottage Inn changed hands about a year or so ago. The new ownership has taken on a remodeling program, they've also added Sam's General Store, which is a walkaway food and beverage business inside the lobby of the inn. They have gone to planning commission twice now for an original use permit and a subsequent modification to the use permit. What they're asking for is a finding from you that it would be a public convenience or necessity for them to allow the sale of beer and wine at the inn. The specific license type that they're asking- The specific license type that they're asking for is a Type 41. That's an on-sale beer and wine license. Now, to be really clear, they're not asking for permission to run a bar out of the inn, specifically under the use permit and under the PCN. What they are asking for, and if so approved by you, would they be allowed to do, is to serve on-sale wine or beer to their guests as they're checking in. That's fairly common among different inns here in Calistoga and throughout Napa Valley. And then separately, at the Sam's General Store portion of the business, to have off-sale sales, to sell bottles of wine or potentially beer to customers as a souvenir, to something to take back home, to take off property, and do so as they choose. As I noted, we did have two public hearings in front of the planning commission related to this. There wasn't any opposition that we received to those applications. Things to consider in your determination and your consideration of this application include the location. While it is in an area that has a mix of residential and commercial, it is zoned community commercial and is proximate to Lincoln Avenue. Its proximity to schools and churches. While school district property is immediately adjacent to it, behind it on Stevenson, the actual school is over 800 feet away. We are required to have the police chief review these applications and provide his opinion on these as they come in. In this case, the chief has looked at this and determined there wouldn't be any adverse issues or expect any adverse issues from this application. And finally, I would note, it's been a little while since we've had a PCN in front of you. I looked, the last one was 2017. That was for WH Smith Wines. The last one prior to that was 2014, Mountview Hotel. There's a lot of alcohol ABC licenses that do come before us in the planning department, and a large number of them don't require PCNs because of the nature of the license. Without getting too far into the weeds, if it's an O2, which is a duplicate license, a lot of tasting rooms use those. Those don't require a PCN. And quite frequently, restaurants will have an alcohol component as well, and those don't require a PCN either. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Carl Dean, the applicant, is here too, and he could probably clarify anything you may want to know about as well.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions of staff? All right. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the public that would like to address this matter, please make yourself known. With that said, I will close public comment, and I'll bring it back for a few comments of my own. The owner of that property has done a tremendous amount of work to bring it back to its original grandeur, and we appreciate that certainly very much. Obviously, we did notice all of the neighbors, including the residential neighbors, on this.
Absolutely.
And no comment or feedback on that. While this is a PCN, convenience and necessity, I don't know that I find it a necessity, but it is certainly a convenience that I wouldn't want to stand in front of. And I also applaud them because there are potentially other B&Bs in the area that may not be properly licensed for doing what they do. So anytime someone presents themselves and gets themselves in line, we appreciate that very much. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion on this item as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you very much. Zach, thanks you. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, general government, consideration of a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment to the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. The recommended action is consider adopting the resolution. Taking us through this item will be Melissa Vasquez. Vasquez, sorry, Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have one opening for the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. And with that, we had one application. And for your consideration, we have Ann Shelby Valentine, who is the incumbent. And if selected, she'll serve a two-year term through December 31st, 2021.
Thank you very much. And I believe she has been our representative on the mosquito abatement forever. So we certainly appreciate, and I've had a chance to speak with her, appreciate her willingness to continue to serve our community in that fashion. And we'll... Councilmembers, any questions on this?
I'd like to thank Shelby also for continuing to serve and protect us, help protect us against those vectors.
Thank you. Anyone in the public who should address this matter? I'll close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion on this item as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Carries. Item number seven, presentation on the audited comprehensive annual financial report, known as the CAFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. And to receive and file the report, the recommended action is receive and file the report. Taking us through this will be Gloria Leon, Administrative Services Director. Gloria, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, for having me here. As always, a pleasure to come back every year and present the annual financial statements for the year ending. Today, we also have our senior partner here from RJ Riccardi out of San Rafael, who will actually do the presentation on the CAFR. And so he's going to be focusing on pages 15 to 20 and also page 57 of the CAFR. It's very small print, so I really can't put it over on an overview, but there are copies in the back if anybody wants to follow along with the auditor as he presents the financials. I will say, this is one of several reports that we have to file every year. We've got a streets report, we've got a single audit, we've got a city's financial report, public facility special district report, and also the Metropolitan Commission report. So we've got quite a few reports that we need to file by the end of the year, and with the exception of the single audit, which has to be completed by May, I mean March of the following year, and we do have a single audit this year because we did receive more than $750,000 in federal awards. Also, I'd like to let you know that attached to the report are the auditor's reports, which include communication to those charged with governance, letter from the auditor, which gives us his opinion on the reports, how we do on internal controls. Also, you know, at the beginning of each fiscal year, I bring to you the GAN limit and how much we are allowed to spend. And of course, we're not even close to that number, and so he confirms and verifies the information that I bring to you in July, and he's agreed with what I brought to you back in July. There's also city council and management report, things that the finance department can work on, and there are things that we're looking at that are very minor issues, but we hope to get some of those cleared for the following year, and of course, the CAFR. So with that, I'd like to bring Michael O'Connor to the front to do the presentation.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor, welcome back. Always good to see you here.
My pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me, and, you know, good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council for the city of Calistoga. Please interrupt me at any time if you have questions. And looking at the CAFR, we just want you to turn to page one and page two, which is our independent auditor's report, our opinion on the financial statements. It is on our letterhead. We do work for the city council, and our contact information is there if you ever have questions of myself or anybody at CPA firm I work for. The audit is ongoing. Any issues that come up during the year, feel free to always contact me if you have questions. So page one and two, this audit was done in compliance with all the professional standards and regulations, and this is an unmodified opinion. It's the best you can receive, so there was no issues, no non-compliance. I'm going to skip the MDNA, since that's kind of condensed information. Go to page 15. On page 15 is your statement of net position. It's a snapshot at June 30th, 2019. And this is based on a full accrual basis, as if you were a for-profit company. The bottom line, the last line on this report is the total net position. This is the city's assets less its liabilities. As you see, you have $34 million sitting there in governmental activities, and your business-type activities are basically water and sewer, and you have over $21 million in net position in business-type activities. Next, please turn to page 16. Page 16 is the statement of activities, and it shows the results of your operations for the fiscal year. So it starts off with expenditures. You can see there, you have a total of $18,803,855. It's in the second column there. The first section is governmental expenses, and then the next section is business-type City is in business providing services, so they start with expenditures, the cost of those services. You go to the right, and then it has revenues that offset those services. You get to the third column from the right, then it breaks down what expenditures are left over that are subsidized by the taxpayers. And the bottom section shows the amount of money that's coming in from taxes and interest that are subsidizing those costs. So in the general government, you had about $10,151,000, and then $481,000 in business-type activities. And it comes down to change in net position. This is the one, two, three, five lines from the bottom, and you have, you know, $2.8 million of revenues exceeding expenditures for your governmental activities, and $2.4 million of revenues exceeding expenses in business-type activities. Very positive. Next is page 17. This is a balance sheet, again, a snapshot at June 30, 19. This is on what's called a modified accrual basis. It's almost on a cash basis. This is where governments were originally reported, and a lot of people would want to know how much money is put in certain pots for certain things. So your first fund there is your general fund, and the total fund balance, the second line from the bottom, you have almost $7.9 million sitting in your general fund. And then you can see going across the different types of funds. These are major funds. They have, you know, most of the assets or revenues or expenditures in the governmental activities. But they're all for, basically, other than the general fund, they're all for specific grants, which is for specific purposes. But they all are positive going across. Total, to the right, you have 16.6 or almost 16.7 million dollars in those funds. The other governmental funds, one second from the left there, there's a breakdown of those. Those are called non-major funds in the back of this report that lists all those, and the totals will tie out to this, that column. He wanted to see all those funds. The city has a number of funds. Next, I'd like you to turn to page 18. So this is your statement of revenue and expenditures for these same funds on a modified accrual basis, so it's almost like a cash basis. Third line from the bottom, you can see the general fund actually spent $400,000, over $400,000 more than they brought in. Home grant fund was $90,000 of revenues exceeding expenditures. Looks like capital lease fund has had a small loss, $4,300. The other governmental funds, almost $300,000 of revenues exceeding expenditures. And that's all I wanted to point out in those pages. That's all I want to point out in this report. And there are notes to the financial statements that give a lot of information about the city, its accounting policies, a lot about their pension plan, their other post-employment benefit plans, capital assets, long-term debt. All those details are in the notes to the financial statements, but just wanted to point that out, and want to go through that for this presentation. That's it.
Thank you very much. Gloria, this obviously is a public document, available at City Hall, also available on the website.
It will be available on the website tomorrow. It's not there yet. Unless you look at the staff report and the agenda today, you will find it on the website, but it'll be specifically in the finance department by tomorrow.
Okay. And Mr. O'Connor, we continue to be in good health and good practices accounting-wise?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers...
Gloria really works really hard in putting this report together, as well as many other things there, and running her department. So she's definitely working really hard, making a huge effort to make sure that is happening.
We happen to like her a lot as well. Councilmembers, questions of Mr. O'Connor or of Gloria?
Statement. Thank you very much for your work, and Gloria, for keeping us on the straight and narrow here with finances. With reference to the report, besides the information about how much we receive and how much we spend and how much is encumbered for this and that, there's also other information that pertains to the city, such as what our assets are, some information about our water system, information about the wastewater system, park. Each one of the departments on the very last page has some statistics there that some might find interesting, even if you're not a city council person. So it's worthwhile reading, just to kind of catch up on what the city's about besides the finances. So thank you very much. I think it's a great report and reading material that I'm not looking forward to for another year.
But it's there should you need it.
Yeah.
Continuing with our full transparency, after the end of the day, this is the people's money, so they should see what it's being used for, where it's going, et cetera.
So I also appreciate the work. My message to the public is, if you don't get it right away, don't despond. It's not easy reading. It was hours that I went only through pages three to five and still trying to understand. And I have considerable background in accounting, and still there was some difficulty there. So Ms. Leon, thank you for helping me this afternoon, understanding some concerns I had. I did make a few suggestions that might help the general reader in the future, but I appreciate the work you put into organizing all this mass of data.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone in the public, any questions on this item? All right. With that said, you need a motion to accept and file this, Gloria? Entertain a motion as presented to accept the report and file it.
I move we do that. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. We have a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My pleasure.
See you next year, Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. All right. That is it, ladies and gentlemen. We will now adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be February 4th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in this exact same place. Have a nice evening.